After seven, we'd like to.
Twenty minutes to get the agenda up.
All right, I got it.
We're going to get started with our meeting this evening. And at this point in time, I'd like to have a call of the meeting and also an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved?
A motion by Ms.
Curran.
Curran, sorry.
Second.
It's been a little late. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I'd like to start off, actually, there was a question we had raised about some paintings, and I was going to ask, Michelle, could you come in for a second? There were some, somebody had mentioned something about, come on up if you don't mind.
Oh, boy.
Something missing in the paintings or the things that are hanging on, not on the wall.
I'm not buying it. I'm not buying it, Ms. Canfield.
So we actually wanted to at least get you in here, Michelle, because Michelle is celebrating her five-year anniversary here in the town. And I can't believe it, when I signed this, I said, "I can't believe it's been five years."
I know.
And that just, you know, time flies when you're having fun sometimes. Obviously, on behalf of the board, I wanted to give you a certificate of appreciation, but, you know, this is just something in writing, but the really appreciation is all that you do for Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, but more importantly, for the residents, because those are the ones, the calls that you and other members of the office get. And all I can tell you is thank you, because it's, it can be very hard work, especially when people are trying to complain about the transfer station not being open, or, you know, the roads aren't being plowed, or, you know, God only knows what else a lot of people are complaining about, but you're the one, the first line of defense. But thank you very much, and that's why I just wanted to say.
I appreciate it.
For the board, we're very happy and honored that you're still here with us, and look forward for another five years, and maybe another five years after that. Twenty-five years will be like Jim, you know, we'll have a twenty-five year.
You'll look like this.
No, she will never look like that.
I hope not.
Well, thank you very much.
No, Michelle, thank, yeah, no, you do a great job, and you have great personality and, and rapport, so thank you. We appreciate your professionalism, and congratulations, five years is great.
Thank you.
Asher bought it today, she said it seems like five minutes.
It is.
All of it underwater.
Obviously, we've got the most important little certificate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, Deister.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, Jane, you're back.
All right. Now we'll get back. Forget about those paintings, the rooms look good. Walk-ins, are there any walk-ins this evening? Yes, Kathleen.
Kathleen Taylor, Sixth Jackson Road.
Actually, I need you to come up to the mic, so we can get you on the TV, and also, people can hear you.
That's why I wore my hat. Kathleen Taylor, Sixth Jackson Road. And maybe I should have just gone right to Michelle. I just wanted to make a request to the town. I walk, you know, it's dark, it's wintertime, everything else now, but I walk the Cole Parkway Harbor Walk every night with my dog, because a lot of coyotes in my neighborhood. And there's no lights from the harbor master's office on right now, all the way down to the lobster and duck.
So is landing.
Yeah, and so it's dark, and, you know, a lot of people use it. There's still runners out there, there's people who come out of the restaurants and whatnot. I know that there was one of those LED ones put in, but it's dead right now. And just hoping that, you know, it could be, even if it's lit up till like nine o'clock at night, it would be kind of nice. And then, um...
Tell you what, let me ask you, let me ask one quick question if I can.
Sure.
Kevin, can we get somebody, are they on timers down there? The lights down on the, on Cole Parkway?
If there is an LED light set up there, it should be working.
It's not.
In order, and if that's the case, we can...
Can we have somebody go down and take a look at them?
I can add something.
Perfect, yes.
Just because I've been working on this for some residents, that we, the light bulbs were backordered.
Okay.
And they just came in the first of November. And I've just been talking to, I haven't got camera, but I've been talking to Mike and Paula and Bobby. And they have a long list of lights that have to be replaced, so I'll make sure.
See if they can be put down on a higher priority, because it's a public area.
Yeah, because there's the lanterns down there, too, the regular lanterns. And then, another request, and I know this is not a high priority for the town, but, you know, I, I'm a boater, but I use that area all year round. And I was hoping that maybe after storms, they could go down with one of the sidewalk plows, and just, you know, clear a path for people, because a lot of people do use it. And that's, that's all I was requesting.
Sure.
So.
Make sure, ask them to make sure that the snow blower bombardier can get maybe down there.
Yeah, we'll just coordinate with Stephen Rowan, and we can get something going down there.
Appreciate it.
Kathleen, thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Any other walk-ins? Anne? Sorry, just checking. Didn't know maybe for my, that's all right.
Move the question, move the question.
You want to get out of here early, Anne. It's got to be a short meeting.
Secret, I was short.
See? This is what you get, Jen.
Chairman of the Board of the Planning Board, yes?
Jen Burbine, Ten Pannycress Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. We need some light at the entrance to the library.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's dangerous. People have a tendency to turn into the first driveway, just before it, or to go right by it. We need lights.
Okay, you mean to the entrance, right off?
Right off of Branch Street.
Branch Street, okay.
Yes, we need lights.
Okay.
We need to look how long they stay on, too.
All right?
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burbine.
All right, anybody else from walk-ins?
Anybody else needs lights?
All right, Jim?
Two things real quick. I met with Kathleen Gardner, our town clerk, today on her budget, and asked her to give me an update on the electronic check-in for town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Very well received, she said it went fantastic. People checked in quickly, easily, and then at the end, she just loads it out of the book, and she has a record of everybody who went to town meeting, so we're going to look to continue that. Maybe we can either buy the machines in this budget, or it'll be for the next budget. So we're hoping to have them for the town meeting in April, either way, find the money to do that.
Any other companies, or competitors that we could use?
Well, we will, yeah, we'll, so I said, find someone else to do a free demo.
Town meeting?
But we will, we'll keep looking at that, but she was very happy with it. I've gotten limited feedback, it's been very good, so we're going to use that. And also, she said we can use that in the future for early voting, not for regular voting, but for early voting. So that could eliminate some of the lines that we had out here with people last year. So that seemed to go very well, we're going to try to continue that. And again, we should have pretty good crowd at the annual town meeting, so we're going to want to try it in April. The other thing I wanted to mention is both the police department and our office have been hearing from a lot of residents about some robo, or sales calls. They are spoofing the town hall number, so it looks like you're getting a call from the town hall.
Oh.
So we've got information up on our website, and the police website, and Facebook site. People should know, the town hall will not call you and ask you for personal information or data. We don't do that. But there's a whole list of things to do if you think you're being spoofed, but the most important thing is know that we will not ask you for personal data when we call your house. She says that we're not going to call you, number one, but two, the town hall will not call and ask for personal data, so you should not be giving that type of data out to anybody when they're calling the phone.
And that's on our Facebook page, will you put that out there?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep. That's all I'm going to do for tonight.
Any questions from the board? No?
Can't talk long, the guys at the coffee shop, so the camera makes me look fat, so I got to get off the camera.
They told you you look fat?
I had it fat on the TV, yeah.
Could be going to the coffee shop too.
It's not the camera.
That could be.
Oh.
I got to get off the camera.
Listen to you. Sorry. Moving on. Discussion vote of the Beach Commission rate change recommendations. I know Mary Jo McNally's here for the Situate Beach Commission. Come on up, how are you, Mary Jo?
Oh, sorry.
Got anything else nice to say?
Usually, that's me more.
Can I explain myself?
No, we're moving on. So Mary Jo, you have a proposal for the Beach, Situate Beach Commission to change the rates. Hang on, I'm just...
I do, did, did you get the proposal?
We do.
Okay. The reason why we are looking into this is, I worked in treasurer collector's office, we got a lot of complaints because there weren't enough parking spots for residents.
Yep.
And they get really irate. So what we tried to do was increase the fees, decrease the number of stickers, so that the revenue stream stays the same. So that was kind of our goal. We did not increase the fee for residents. We did not increase the fee for the people that own land but are not residents. And we did not increase the one day, which virtually nobody uses anyway.
Twenty bucks, right, yeah.
But, um...
Nancy, you want to come on up? Are you the, aren't you the chair?
No.
Come on up, there's TVs right here, you might as well come on, you're right. You do this with Mary Jo?
Actually, Steve is the chairman of the chair.
Steve, you too, come on over.
I am just a regular board member.
All right, just want to introduce yourselves for the audience, if you don't want.
Nancy, for Situate Beach Commission.
Hi, Stephen O'Brien, Situate Beach Commission.
Welcome. Okay, so basically, you're reducing the, the number of stickers, but you're increasing the rates for out-of-towners, both those people who are outside of the Hummerock area, and increasing the Hummerock resident area with respect to Marshfield.
Yes.
Reducing those numbers. And with respect to the fifty-dollar weekly rate, that doesn't change?
That does not change, that...
It doesn't change, twenty dollars.
No. That fifty dollars is rarely used, because it's so difficult for the people to get it, and I would like to see that changed, particularly for renters that come, thinking that if they can get to our beaches, they'll stay in our town, they'll support our businesses. Right now, they really, they have to send us a copy of their rental agreement and their car registration, and they just don't do it.
Right. All right. Questions from the board on this?
I have a question. Thank you for doing this analysis. What is the Duxbury rate for out-of-towners? I just want to make sure we're sort of in line.
The Duxbury rate is, it's just over three hundred dollars.
It is, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five for Duxbury? Okay, and you're proposing three hundred for out-of-towners?
Cohasset, it's five hundred, and they have a two-year waiting list. And mostly, other towns don't even sell them, like Marshfield doesn't offer them.
Where's their beach?
Sandy Beach.
I know, it's very tiny, if you ask me. I'd be buying Situate beach stickers.
Well, they do it to be prohibitive, they don't want people there.
Right, well, I didn't say that. Did you just say that?
I did.
But they still, they still sell out of them every year.
Yeah.
And at two hundred dollars, we sell out of them very quickly.
Nancy, I know you haven't had a chance to look at the numbers, but if the numbers are the same, and we're just changing the numbers of stickers, that's not going to impact the budget, right? Okay. All right, I'll be the one to raise it again. What about the Hummerock? Not Hummerock as in Situate residents, but the people who surround it from Marshfield. I know that we're increasing it. Any thought about just giving them the same rate as Norwell, and Duxbury, or Cohasset, and other?
You mean, keep it at seventy-five?
No, like increase it to three hundred.
Oh.
I don't know why we're giving a preference. We gave them a kind of a gauge.
Well, because the Hummerock, they can only go to Hummerock Beach, they can't go anywhere else.
Yeah, we can't buy one to Rexham Beach.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Like, we're giving them benefit, nobody in Situate can actually go to Rexham, because they're doing the same thing, but I'd rather say if they want, then they could pay the same way.
We talked about it. It's not the table.
So we're giving a, giving a benefit to a section that I don't see as justifiable, because if I were in Norwell, I'd be like, why am I paying three hundred?
Well, well, if the Norwell wants a Hummerock only, they can get the Hummerock only.
Right.
It's not just Marshfield that buys that.
It's just only Hummerock, that's right, we did make that.
Yeah.
How many, sorry, how many parking spaces are in Hummerock? I forgot.
I just asked, Sean, there's seventy-five.
How many, how often do they sell out from Hummerock? Do you, do you know what the numbers are from?
Pretty much every year.
Forget Situate residents, I'm not talking about Situate residents, I'm talking about the Marshfield residents.
Right, pretty much every year, they sell out.
I only ask that because the only time I went down there, it was jammed.
Yeah.
So, I mean, granted, I usually go to Sand Hills, but just curious out of it. Questions from the board on this?
No, thank you for doing this analysis.
Yeah, Jim?
And it doesn't mean that we can't reconsider.
And you want to do four per household, because you think people buy them and give them to friends or something, or?
No, that's what we have done in the past.
Oh, that's what it's always been?
Yes.
All right, well then, is there a motion?
Why is there a motion?
There are a motion. I wasn't sure. About this, or...
Move, want me to try?
Go ahead.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed sticker prices as outlined by the Beach Association, sorry, the Beach Commission. Bein' Art MacKinnon.
Motion by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Curran, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's great, I like that, I thank you for doing that, and I think it's important.
Thank you.
Because it's, it's great, reducing the number, maintaining the price, so that Situate residents can actually utilize it.
Yeah, I think when the word gets out, even though it's not a huge difference, they will feel better that, you know, yes, we're, we're listening to you.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, folks, appreciate it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to a discussion vote, treasurer collector item. Pam Abatalli, the treasurer collector, first is a Massachusetts Clean Water Trust interim loan for septic loan program, and the second's the interfund borrowing for repairs to the water treatment plant, FEMA subsidized repairs. So this is in relation to a article that we had at the annual town meeting.
Correct.
About helping residents to replace their septic systems who don't have the money or the ability to do it, instead of having them sit in a septic that could be in complete, I don't know if you say violation, but when it's...
Failed, failed septic systems usually.
We're trying to help them to fix it.
At a low interest.
Low interest, so that they can get it done, right?
Correct. So we finally got the paperwork all set, this is not a quick-moving process, but my end will be done as soon as you, the board, signs off on everything. We were approved by the Clean Water Trust for two hundred thousand dollars. So I talked to the health, Board of Health agent filling in, I guess she's filling in for the Board of Health agent, today. They are ready to pass their agreement with the town, with the residents, to go through the board, and the board making the corrections. I believe they're voting on it Monday night, December tenth. So I'll attend that meeting also, but we've worked with other towns to simplify that, and now it's a bond council, town council for their review. So this is kind of the last process. They'll figure, it'll be up to the Board of Health to decide, you know, how much a person can get, and if they qualify or not.
The Board of Health will decide if they meet the financial targets?
Yes, the Board of Health, the Board of the Health Agent Board will, you know, go over the applications, and they'll decide, and come to me with it, and then we'll go for the loan, and put the betterment on their tax bill. But, yeah, the Board, that Board of Health really...
Never goes before you?
It's solely administered by the Board of Health for eligibility and the like, when I've seen them in other communities.
That's interesting.
I kind of make sense.
The criteria, they're eligible, it's not a whole, there's not a whole lot of discretion there, you either meet the criteria or you don't.
Right.
Right. But I'll be out.
I think it's a great program, so I'm glad.
I, I think so, and if I'm not mistaken, and maybe, you know, for my board, I think it was great the board supported, I think it was Sean, actually, who actually really pushed this issue, and I have to say, he's not here, he should be coming, he's running late, but that was a great, it's a great thing, like, you know, for the town, and for different residents who can take advantage of it, so kudos to Sean for bringing it and getting it passed. How about a motion?
Move that the Board approves that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C and one eleven of the general laws, in a vote of the town passed April ninth, two thousand eighteen, in Article three, Item D, which authorized a borrowing of two hundred thousand dollars for the septic loan program.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye. We also have another document that Karen needs to read for this vote as well.
She says I have to read the whole thing.
Oh.
All right.
One of those.
So, folks, if you need to get something to eat, void, or get a good glass of water, feel free, here you go.
All right, ready?
Aye, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Situate, Massachusetts certify that at a meeting of the Board held November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified, and at which a present, a quorum was present, the following vote was passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the Board and in my custody, voted, one, that the town shall issue bond or bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, the bonds pursuant to chapter, chapters twenty-nine C and one hundred and eleven of the general laws, and a vote of the town passed April ninth, two thousand thirteen, Article three, Item D, which authorized a total borrowing of two hundred thousand. Two, that in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two hundred thousand. Three, that the bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, at a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement. Four, that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bond and notes, such date, form, and maturities, and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by a majority of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer, and evidenced by the execution of the bonds or notes. Five, that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. And six, that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials, officials, are hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreement or agreements, and the project approval certificate and regulatory agreement or agreements relating to the project. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by a secret ballot, that a notice dating, stating the date, time, place, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to all the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, is located, or if applicable, in accordance with alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine point oh-three-two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session in accordance with general law, Chapter thirty A, Sections eighteen through twenty-five, as amended, dated November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Kevin, thank you very much, appreciate that.
So there's lots of paperwork, too, just for you to sign regarding that.
Sign that at the end, good.
Okay, so now my second item.
Yep.
Okay, so it's an interfund borrowing for the two borrowing articles you just passed at this recent special town meeting. Article five, authorized to borrow one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, and Article six, authorized to borrow four million, but we're gonna, we're only asking for five hundred thousand at this time. So five was to repair the water treatment plant, and six was the FEMA subsidized repairs to force shore up a structure. We've, this is a fast-moving project, as you all know, because you just presented it a couple of, a week or so ago, so Nancy's asked me to get this on the interfund, and we're going to borrow some more, start going at it.
Questions at all?
Nope, just see that she's borrowing against a stabilization fund, which has adequate, sufficient funds to borrow against, so...
Yes, and you just voted also to transfer another million dollars into the stabilization fund, so that has increased also.
Okay.
Motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the interfund borrowing prepared by the treasurer collector in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the purposes of repair to the water treatment plant and FEMA subsidized repairs to force our structures.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pam, thank you very much.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Pam, happy Thanksgiving.
Very happy Thanksgiving, yes. All right, now we're going to move on, at the seven forty-five, the South River dredging contract, that is actually going to be removed, because we are not having it tonight, so...
Oh, really?
You can strike that, yep. Now we're moving on to the seven fifty-five discussion vote of the ninety-and-vinal Road Open Space donation. So if we can get down to that, this happens to be a part of a, I guess you could say, I'm not sure if it falls under the flexible open space, but basically, it was approved at the planning board, a development, but in conjunction with that, they're keeping a sizable amount of it open, and so pursuant to our bylaws, a lot of it is wetland, but pursuant to the bylaws, as a part of this bylaw, you're, the town is to take possession of it. And I think if I'm correct, initially, the school has it, if they fail to put a conservation within, or do something in three years, it goes to the conservation. But Frank Snow from the Conservation Commission's here.
Maybe I can, and I'm kind of pitch-hitting, Mike Hayes was going to...
Yeah, I heard.
...give you some information on that, but he's not feeling great, so I told him I'd...
That's fine.
I'd be happy to come in.
But this, we'd seen this before, this has been before us, I think, a little bit, so we knew it was coming.
Right.
And now it's just finalized for us to now have it conveyed into, to the town.
Yep.
It is going into conservation, and will remain there.
Right.
And there'll be a deed restriction, and unless I'm missing anything, I think...
There's one portion that's going to be retained by the schools, is that?
So the, we looked at all the parcels, there was a piece that the school had interest in, as they try to plan ahead, and so they, that piece is going to be held, I guess, in sort of flux, until the school makes that decision. So I'm not really sure if that piece gets conveyed to the school.
So it's not a part of this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Excuse me?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
The agreement is, they've given us a agreement that said if, if the schools don't use it, it will go to conservation.
Right, it's a three-year window.
Yeah.
So it gets hold, it's held by the town while the school figures things out, and then, in the event they don't use it, then it automatically goes into conservation.[1541.62] then, in the event they don't use it, then it automatically goes into conservation.
And I met with the superintendent of schools, and he seemed good with, with that, so.
And how big was that piece, Frank?
I think it's about four acres.
No, it's three acres and thirteen.
Okay.
Three acres of the, and then thirteen, so it's thirteen acres probably of the wetland portion, based on the plans, that's what I thought I saw.
This is a combination of wetlands and uplands, the flexible open space subdivision had like four acres, and it wasn't enough acreage to interest like a, a land conservation group or anything like that, but they had additional land, so they added that to it. So combined, it, it has a meaningful piece of property that we might be able to create some sort of small trail, do something with the school department, maybe a little nature walk thing, seemed like a good idea. And they've also agreed to fund some of our trail work as part of that, which was similar to what a conservation group like Wildlands Trust would have asked them to do. So we sort of, we chatted with Wildlands Trust, kinda got a format from them, and then followed that.
Questions from the board at all?
Is, so the thirteen acres is going to the school, or the four acres?
Four acres to the school, and thirteen to conservation.
Yep.
You're shaking your, are you?
It's three acres.
Three acres.
Three acres to the school.
It's on this page, it's on page fifteen.
And the rest of it goes to conservation.
How much is it worth?
And my apologies, I don't have a map.
It's, we have the backup.
We have maps, Frank, yeah, it's okay. And then they're also donating three thousand dollars to the General Conservation Commission Fund.
Yep, that we'll use for trail work and things like that.
Okay.
Motion?
I move that the town of Situate accept a deed for the donation of the land at ninety Anvinyl LLC through its conservation commission for administration, control, and maintenance under the provisions of mass general law, chapter forty, section eight C, for land in Situate, Massachusetts, as shown, shown as open space parcel one and open space parcel two on a plan entitled Curtis Estates, a definitive flexible open space development plan at ninety Anvinyl Road in Situate, Massachusetts, dated June fourteen, two thousand seventeen, drawn by Ross Engineering Professional Engineers. Which plan is recorded with the Plymouth County Register of Deeds as Plan Number Two Twenty-Eight of two thousand and eighteen in Plan Book sixty-two, page two seventy-three, and also another parcel of land in Situate, Mass, shown as open space parcel three on the land, plan of land entitled Plan of Land in the Town of Situate, ninety Anvinyl Road, dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, signed by Paul J. Mirobito, professional land surveyor, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, drawn by same, and out of Norwell.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by.
Second.
Ms. Curran, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Frank, thank you very much.
Frank, just working through that. Happy Thanksgiving.
I'm reading any longer ones again.
These guys are giving you the human's work right now. Ah, gonna move on to a discussion vote, interactive surface solutions contract for fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, and we have Kevin Cafferty, superintendent of the DPW.
And Michael Green.
And Michael Green. How are you?
How you doing?
So we actually discussed this at town meeting, after town meeting had closed as part of our Board of Selectmen meeting, we have a meeting starting at eight, six-thirty, we suspend, go to town meeting, and then we reconvene at the end of town meeting, and we were discussing this, but the board wanted to have some more information about it, so we're back tonight, Kevin, you provided more backup information for the questions that we had, and I'll give it quickly over to you to just give us a little update then.
Um, yeah, no problem.
For the audience, so they understand what we're looking at.
No problem at all. The material that we're talking about, it's called Magico, it's by ProMelt. What it is, it's a blend of magnesium chloride and feed-grade molasses, and what we do is we treat our pre-salt with it, our salt to make what's called a super salt. I know it sounds kinda corny, but it makes a high active salt. What that allows to do is typically your salt is not very reactive below seventeen degrees, this brings the temperature well down below zero, so it's usable, and it's still activated. So if it's seventeen degrees out and we put salt out, it's not doing a lot because it's not functioning. One of the things we've been doing for quite a while is taking classes in learning how to fight snow better. Mike and I recently went to a class where we had people from upstate New York, there were people from Fairbanks, Alaska, showing how they treat and fight snow in some of the different applications that they do, and we're looking to bring that back and put some of that technology that they've been using and use it here. Some of the towns in the area, like Wellesley, Lexington, we, also the town of Rutland, Vermont, other towns have used it in the area, and they claim up to a thirty percent savings in salt. I'm not gonna claim that we're gonna save thirty percent savings in salt, because it's gonna be, it's gonna take time for us to do this, we're gonna have to add saddle tanks to a lot of our trucks and pre-wet the salt, but it will give us another tool to provide better protection to the residents of Situate, an activated salt that goes well below zero degrees, it'll also allow us to treat the, around the public safety building. We've already had talks with conservation that we would be able to try this material in the area, where it's the molasses-based and it's salt, it's not as a typical spreading salt all over the place. Some of our tougher areas, we're also gonna put an application in. Just for example, last year, we used two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine tons of salt, the cost of salt is, last year was sixty-eight, ninety-eight a ton, we spent about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in salt, so any savings we can do in salt is significant and helps us. So it's another tool in the toolbox for Mike, and. Do you wanna comment about it at all? And this is, the contract, it's, it's over a three-year period, so the total came up, the aggregate came up to over, I think, the fifty-two. If we don't like the product and it's not working out, we can cancel it anytime, we just don't, we don't continue using, so it's just like purchasing salt.
I think if it works out as well as some of these towns say, you know, with the lower temperatures, because what we have is like, we'll go out and treat the entire town with the white salt, we are losing a lot to the edge of the roads, but also the, the police will keep calling and saying, hey, none of these roads are treated, your roads aren't treated, but they, at the lower temperatures, the salt is on the road, it just takes four to five hours for it to activate at that low temperature, and I think a lot of the residents are saying, you know, my area hasn't been hit, my area hasn't been hit. This, this product is, it comes in, it comes in brown, so it's, you can see it on the ground too, and it activates at lower temperatures, which I think will cut down a ton of the, you know, just go back out and hit it again a second, third time or something, and it also cuts down on the road pack, where you get that pack on the, ice pack on the road, it's supposed to do well with that, and going to these classes, like I'm, everyone on, on the highway about is a hundred percent on board, so I think it's, I think it's, it will definitely be a big savings to the town, and I'm hoping it is, and move forward.
And benefit.
Just one question, so do you guys, who maintains Route Three A, is it the state or do we?
State does.
They do, and have, do you know if they've used this at all, in any of those?
They do spray, they have saddle tanks, and they spray their salt as it goes down, so.
Just, but the regular salt, not this treatment?
They have regular salt, and they use different chemicals also.
Yeah.
For this, it's, it's a magnesium chloride that's also integrated with the molasses, so it, we're, as Mike was saying, typical salt might take up, take four hours to actually start working effectively, where this salt on contact will work effectively. What we're planning on doing is we're not gonna do all of our salt, but we're gonna do enough salt to hit the special areas, we get certain areas in town where there are curves, you know, where they, we're in the hills, we'll hit the hill areas with it, and we'll use that, especially over maybe by the railroad tracks, we're not gonna do the entire town, we'll see how it works, we may switch to a treated salt if it starts working out really well, but it is expensive with, you know, manpower and everything else.
And the runoff from the, from the, it's certainly byproduct that.
No, it's more natural, it's environmentally friendly, and that's the feed-grade molasses, so it's supposed to be.
Sweet.
Supposed to be very good.
We learned that without the treated salt, the salt falling, the bounce factor is a ton, you actually, you see a lot of salt on the curb, you're losing like sixty to seventy percent of the salt on, on, with the bounce factor, bouncing on the side of the road. With the treated salt, it seems to just lay right down on the, on the road surface, which is a big, you know, I think you guys have seen the salt on the side of the roads when we get up in the morning.
And Mike's guys, we've been working pretty hard in trying to get our, our sanders, one of the things we do is we calibrate our sanders, so we put out a specific pounds per mile, and we're really cutting back and working, trying to use as little salt as possible for some of the areas. It's, it's an adventure, but we're, we're working at it, and we ask residents, you know, be patient, we're, we're trying to do our best, we're not gonna cover the roads in salt and have everybody driving it over with salt, because it's not doing any good by just putting extra salt down sometimes.
Tony, did you have questions?
Yeah, just, and you started explaining it, how does it actually work? You said you have the saddles on, on the truck, is it spraying a mixture of molasses and salt?
Eventually, eventually, we will be doing that, we don't have the saddle tanks for all the trucks, we only have saddle tanks on one truck right now.
So how does it?
But what we can do is, we can mix this with the white salt, so we're gonna have a container, a large, you know, five-hundred gallon container with a spray wand on it, so what we'll do is we'll bring a loader up, pick some salt, spray it, and you put like ten gallons per one ton, and you just mix it, and you come up with a consistent mixture, and that's what you use in the specific truck, and it allows it to work out better. It also helps, we can add it to our brine solution, when we're out brining this year, we can also add twenty percent, up to ten to twenty percent of this mixture, which will allow the brine to be more effective and also work at colder temperatures.
And that's really environmentally safe in those areas, if you have that, if you have the brine tank, because the brine mixture is a low salt content, but it is, and the magnesium in the.
Molasses.
The Magico makes it, makes it really environmentally safe, because we have a bunch of areas there for, like the bridges and all, all the areas that, you know, we can't have the salt.
But the brine really didn't work very well, if I remember correctly.
We just had problems with the delivery system, we had, now we've got a brand-new ten-wheeler with the thing, the biggest thing with, with the brine was, we didn't have a good delivery system from, from the stock, we came in, we came in all gunhole with the, with the top line equipment, but we, but the delivery system fell, fell short, we had a truck, we had the truck on, so now we've got a brand-new ten-wheeler, we've got a brand-new tank on it, and.
We've added, we've added a tank to one of the, one of the.
Does that just spray the roads, is that?
It sprays the roads, yes.
And with this chemical, it's definitely gonna take effect.
So what are we buying, fifty-two thousand dollars' worth of this mixture that will initially mix with the salt, do we have like a cement truck that mixes it, how does it?
No, with a loader, you have a wand, a guy comes in with a wand, we turn it on, and it's ten gallons per, per ton of mix, and they spray it right on the loader as it's, as it's unloaded.
Mixing the salt.
And they spray it right on the thing, and they mix it right in, then they grab another scoop, and they mix it right in, and then they pile, you know, we stockpile it up there, so it's right at the, right at the salt line.
Right.
And they mix it right there.
What?
So Mike, how many trucks do you think you'll equip with it if it passes tonight? Is it just one, or all of them?
Well, you, all the trucks will use it.
Oh, okay.
You know, if, depending on what, how, where we're gonna be using it, but I think most of the trucks will be using the product, once we get underway and we start getting the saddlebags, we're gonna try to get saddlebags for all the trucks, so we can be spraying the product right as it comes, as the salt is dropping out, instead of mixing it by hand, so we're starting with like baby steps and going into what, what some of the bigger companies and towns are doing.
So you were saying, how would it work in the ideal situation? You'd spray it and then spray it first, and the salt would fall on top of it?
So in an ideal situation, you'd do, you'd do two things, you'd pre-treat, you'd pre-treat the roadway, and what that'll do is if it starts snowing, it breaks, it breaks the chemical bond of the snow up, same as the brine that we always talked about.
Pre-treat it with what, the molasses?
Pre-treat it with the molasses and the brine, the brine solution.
Yeah.
Or you could even just treat it with brine, depending on how things are going. You would use pre-treated salt, you would mix it anyways, and it's a super salt, and you would, you would sand salt when you needed to. The other option that we have that we're looking to do in the future is use saddle tanks, because what that does is it actually induces more liquid to the salt as the salt is falling, and it makes it stickier, so the salt stays on the road instead of bouncing around.
But that processes, it's spraying it off the truck and the front?
What it does is, is if you see the spinner in back, if you've ever been behind one, there's two jets, so it hits it as it's hitting the spinner, and then it just, it trickles out, so when it hits, it's really wet. It absorbs it to a certain point, and it makes it stickier than regular salt, it's not as wet as it is with the saddlebag, so.
And it doesn't gum up the auger when it's, when you're pouring it?
Well, that's what the other towns have told us, it hasn't, and they've said supposedly it's less corrosive than straight salt or just a magnesium or any of these other calcium products, so there is a YouTube video on it, if you, people wanna look at it in the audience, the town of Rutland, Vermont uses Innovative Solutions, Magico, that's what the product's called, it's by ProMelt, feel free to take a look at it, but it's, it's worth a shot, and if it saves us money in the long run, we think it's worth looking at.
Any other questions?
It's only fifty-two grand for three years of supply?
It, it's estimated for three, three years of supply, the deal we've brokered with them or worked out with them is, if we do use it for three years, all the tanks, the two tanks that we need for this material, they will supply the tanks, and we get to keep the tanks when it's all done.
Worth it.
So only question, you answered the molasses, I mean, I can't believe there's actual molasses they're putting in it, but, so now that we're buying it and anticipating that this is gonna be used for like zero, ten degrees, maybe sub-zero to the, does that mean that we're actually not gonna have that type of weather, you know, like when I bought my snow blower?
Absolutely.
Sat there in the garage, and you know, it's gonna be nicer weather?
And.
Buy it now, quick.
And the other thing that we hope is, you know, we'll, we'll probably use this even if it is twenty degrees and we get a storm coming, we will, we'll put it out and apply it, just because the reaction time of the salt will be quicker. One of the interesting things they have is, they get into the dilutions, there's a chart, and it gets into how, how effective the salt is, and how quickly the salt acts, and there's a whole science behind it, which I'm not gonna bore everybody on a short night tonight on, on Selectmen's meeting, but it is interesting.
Well, good, thank you. Mike, is there a motion?
Move to award a contract to Innovative Service Solutions for a period of three years to an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for the purchase of Liquid Magic Minus Zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think it's pretty cool you guys went to snow school.
It, it is, and you know what, three of our guys today, the foreman and two of the operators, were at snow school today also, we sent them so that they, they learn about it. It makes a, it makes a big difference when the guys are putting the salt up.
Innovative solution? All right, now we're gonna move on to a discussion vote, generator installation at the Situate Town Library, Nancy Holt, Finance Director, Town Accountant, Kevin Kelly.
Hello, hello.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. So we're looking at a generator for the library, and the reason is that we've noticed that obviously it wasn't a part of the original purchase or renovation of library, but people use it during inclement times, plus we don't wanna have the pipes freezing when, when we lose electricity, and so this has been, this is a part of the excess that we have from the library, and I gotta get to it right here, and we're looking at a cost of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of the generator.
Great, and it's a lot of money.
Then the other thing is there's gonna be some other security enhancements at the library to the tune of nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five, let's just deal with the generator first, and then we'll go to the enhancements, I'll set that on.
So the Public Building Commission has been talking about the generator throughout the library project, but with all of the setbacks that the library renovation project had, it was shelved to the very end to see, to make sure that the project got completed, and now that the community room acoustic issue has been dealt with, and the walkway has been, funds have been set aside for the ADA accessibility issue for the, that walkway, we're down to the last piece of the project that's left outstanding, which is about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and as the board knows, this is under the control of the Board of Selectmen. So if the board decides that it thinks it's necessary to have a generator at that location, they would have to release funds to the Public Building Commission, and then they would take it up at their next meeting. But there is, there was a capital project, there still is a capital project request in for a live, a generator at the library, and that's why Kevin is here to explain to you what it would be, how much it would cost, and what's already there in terms of whether there's a stub, not a stub for it to be hooked onto.
So there's currently nothing there for emergency generator hookup. During the construction phase, we did get a PCO, a potential change order, to put in the circuitry, the circuit boards and the transfer switch, so that we could bring in a rolling hundred-kilowatt generator, but it was never approved, we never did it, and that was seventy-five thousand dollars, and that was just to pick up bare basics, that was to pick up the heat, fire pumps, jockey pumps, sewer pumps, those types of things to keep the building running, not to do the whole building. So nothing was done, there's nothing there now. The only thing there now for emergency generator power, it's a diesel-operated fire pump. So we have to install everything, new transfer switch, new everything, and it's, the intent would be to pick up the entire building.
And did this go out to public bid?
I think it wouldn't go out to bid yet until the board decided that that's something they want to do.
Okay, okay, so we're just doing the authorization and then going?
This is the budget number to get the job done from research, from talking to people of what we, what we're looking at to do the job.
To Tony's point, which I'm sure he's gonna say, it's gonna come in at one hundred and ninety, eighty-nine dollars.
There's no way we're paying two hundred thousand dollars for a generator.
Pardon me?
There's no way we're gonna pay two hundred thousand dollars for a generator.
No, I think, I put it in a budget of one eighty and carried ten thousand in contingency, but when you look at what we, what it would cost, if I wanna replace the generator back, I'm actively working on this now, that's a thirty-five thousand dollar number just to put a new generator in, and that's with all the circuitry and all the transfer switch, the money's in the actual wiring inside. To put the generator in is not the big, the big issue, the bigger issue is wiring everything and putting in the transfer switches. That's where all the money is, and this would be a diesel generator.
Doesn't it seem like outrageously crazy high? I mean, I just did one at my house, and granted, it's on a different scale, but that's.
About, about ten thousand?
No, about a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars to do the wiring and a thousand dollars for the generator, and there's ten circuits.
To pick up just parts of the house, ten circuits, right, so this is to pick up an entire building, air conditioning, heating, elevators, fire pumps, fire alarm systems.
Well, maybe we have to think about whether we want it as an emergency backup or as a functioning building in the state that there's no power.
That's fine, we can, we can price it both ways, we can, when we scope it, we can price it to cover the entire building, and then just to cover what we had priced it for originally, which was just the bare basics for emergency operation things, for heating, cooling.
To maintain the building.
This just seems crazy high.
Well, just, one of the reasons back in the conversation that the whole building, you know, yes, for fire protection and all, and to make sure the pipes don't burst, was that the fire chief was hopeful we could use it as a reliable warming center for prolonged power outages, there's other issues involved with that, but that was sort of the logic for doing the whole building at the time. I, I agree, we have to get the right cross, but there's that benefit to the community if we have that space available.
What's the, you may not know the answer to this, but Central School, the central housing, do they have a generator?
They do, I don't know the size, but they'll.
I think just in their community room, right? Because folks usually have to go to the community room.
Not all the units.
It's not the whole building.
Okay, so that's at the far end of the building, that's the community room?
Yes.
How many square feet is the library?
I'm gonna off the top of my head.
Do you know?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Say twenty-five or so.
Well, it's not zonable, right, just because of the layout, so you can't zone, like you can't.
No.
Generate just the zone, you have to either do the whole building or.
No, you can.
Well, you do systems.
Right, but you can't, like, just do the lower level.
Pick up a zone, if you gotta do that, you get into the whole building.
But I think it'd be really worthwhile to, to cost out the fire protection versus the full, whole building.
Fire protection?[1778.54]
To keep the building warm enough so that the pipes don't have to be drained if there's prolonged, I mean, right now it's a wet system. And if there's a prolonged power outage, they have to go in and manually drain that system. Or pipes burst, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, one, one solution would be to do that if we had a really extreme conditions. We potentially have to do that. We got really lucky last March when we were without power for a few days, if the weather wasn't too cold. We didn't have to do any of those things.
Well, I agree with Tony, if we can do it in two, two stages, just so we see the difference, because I think sometimes what I'm hearing, your concern is that we see here, we'll put a number on it, and that's where it comes in. Because folks know what we've allocated.
I don't work that way, but I mean, that's fine.
No, I'm not saying you do, but-
We put the, we put it down as a place mark for the budget, and we haven't scoped up the job. I'll be happy to scope it both ways, that's fine, and then come back to the table and get an approval for either.
Where did you get the $180,000?
Talking to generator people with the size of the building, the kilowatt usage and what's there now.
So you spoke to, like two or three?
Spoke to two generator peoples and one electrician.
I'm fine, I'm fine to move it forward. I mean, I remember sitting here a year ago when the library was at risk, and I was shocked that we didn't have a generator in a brand-new building. So I'm-
No, I have no problems with the idea of moving it forward. I think the concept I have is, is that, I know that you had mentioned air conditioning, that I think is neither here nor there. If it happens during the summer, we haven't had one in probably about seven years where the hurricane came up and shut it, electricity, we don't need AC in there at that point. It's, people can go outside and relax. The heat concerns me, but the only thing I'm concerned about is just enough to keep it heated without having the pipes burst, obviously is important. If it's going to be a warming center, shall we say, so to speak, I'm not really sure. I mean, it's the library, and you're going to pile in a whole bunch of people there. That's not going to happen that way. It's going to be basically, come in at this time to warm up and leave, and spending a lot of type of money, I'd rather spend it in other areas. I mean, I'd rather make sure that they'd have it at, although we can't do it because it's not town-owned, but Lincoln Park, you know, other areas where they, they don't have a generator, or they need to upgrade their generator, I'd rather see it happen there. Because I'm not seeing the library as being a functional, let's go and put people there. I mean, it's a shelter.
It's not a shelter, go put people there. It's a building that's available for people to go to if they don't have power. They can charge their electronics. We tell people to come here, and if they don't have power, you don't want to go to the shelter. You come to the town hall, you can sit in the meeting room, the heat's on, you charge your phone, charge your iPad, and then go back out.
Jim, don't we run into a situation where, okay, nonessential employees are coming during the storm? We're not going to say, library employees, come on in, open up. It's going to be shut down, that place is only going to have a generator going during the middle of the storm. It's only after the end of the storm.
It's after the storm's over, right? Because we don't want people driving in the storm anyways. But it's after the storm's over, they can come in, run their normal hours, be there. You know, people, parents are at home, they got kids. There's no heat, there's nothing to do, you go up to the children's room. You know, we put on a program at the children's room. It's just, too often we do things halfway, and then we come back later and say, geez, I wish we had done it the whole way.
I think, I think we're missing, I don't think any of us disagree with the fact of making the library, you know, have it generated and work, and have either minimal functionality or complete functionality you're talking about. I think this number, I speak for myself, is outrageous, in my opinion. And I don't know what you guys think. I mean, if this was, if this was $15,000, we'd all sign off on a tomorrow and say, let's go.
The number, I saw the number right away. I thought to myself, $190,000, what's it, what's it entail?
The number is high. I mean, you can't argue that at all.
You also have to remember, I'm paying 30% more than you're paying for the same electrician. Because I'm paying prevailing wage. So my electrician's way more than your electrician because of what I have to pay him. That's number one. Number two, they're all busy. You know, getting back to the dredge, we got a bid on the dredge, we estimated a million dollars, the bid came in at a million five, we get one bid. Because no one's available. All their equipment is in Plymouth, it's in Boston, there's just nobody available to do the work. It's the same with contractors. For us, they're all busy, so the bids are coming at higher. So what I'd ask the board is to approve this, have Kevin get the two numbers, and then come back, and you can tell them which one you want, but I don't want to have to come back and be back and forth and, and this and that. We don't want to do the work, I didn't want Kevin to go out and do the work.
No, that makes sense.
And the board said, no, we're not going to do it. That's just a waste of his time.
And jumping back to the facts, is that, that we do have, we do have that quote for $74,000, and that's just to put a plug in the wall. That's without a generator. That's just to make it accessible to roll a 100-kilowatt generator up to the building.
To run the essentials.
To run the essentials. And that's just to pick up three quarter, well, the essentials of the building.
So you figure the generator in that case would be 15, maybe?
Yeah, maybe. I don't know for a rolling one.
No, if we're going to install one on those, using the $75,000 on the wiring, we're going to install a generator, the generator would cost?
About 20 grand for a 100-kilowatt.
A hundred right there without doing all the rest of the wire.
Karen?
If we could just go over for a second just the financing and that piece of it. So looking at the detail that you provided and what, you know, there's very little punchless stuff left, but we still have a placeholder for the walkways, it's $25,000, it's going to have to be done, and some other costs from the original appropriation. Other than, so that, so the funds that are being sought to be released are out of this surplus?
Correct.
Okay.
So if we decide to do nothing, this would be, we have these funds borrowed, but we would release them.
Right. Right, it was, right. Okay, so that would only leave, based on the original budget, what's the delta, six, $50,000? Still under budget, but bumping up.
That's why it was left to the very, very end.
Yep.
Well, how's the board feel? Go out and get the two bids and come back?
How much work is it to get the bids?
It's just meeting with people, getting the information, getting the schemes to them, drawing it up. It's, it's impossible. It's, it's some work, but it's not-
We'd have to do a, we'd have to do a sale bid, wouldn't we?
With the holidays, pardon me?
We'd have to do a sale bid on this.
Generators are on a state contract, depending on what you need. Otherwise, you could just go out for a sale bid and have a, have a bid on two things.
So there's a state contract for generators?
There is a state contract, a state contract for generators, but it may not be the type of generator we need. It's not all generators, it's some generators.
Well, that's a, what, anyone have any idea what that is? What the price of, price range of stuff there is?
Well, they would bid on it.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff-
No, but there's a state contract that says you, for $100,000, you get a 75-kilowatt, blah, 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 with blah, blah, blah.
But again, to Kevin's point, the, the big cost of this isn't the actual generator. The big cost is the electric, the electrical work.
So the electrical work, I'm not an electrician. So the electrical work's in the building, and what they typically do is go next to your box and put another circuit breaker there.
Put a transfer switch, yes.
So you're literally wiring, and Dana Richard, I apologize if I'm making simplifying this, you know, you're just wiring it from this circuit breaker to this circuit breaker, and you say, open it up or close it.
Right.
So where's the wiring?
So in the library, the circuit breakers and the circuit board for the mechanical room is down by the treasurer's office. And the circuit breaker and the circuit board to the sewer pump.
Say that again?
So in the library, in the basement of the library, if we were in the basement of the library, the transfer switch would go probably over where the, near the way the fire pump is. So the circuits we need to tie in, do to tie in the heating, is down the hall near the treasurer's office. The circuits we would need to tie in to get the other heating system and the fire alarm system would be over by the back of conservation. So everything's not right beside each other. You have to run additional wiring to pick up the boards. It's not all in the same location. There's a main electrical room, yes, and you would, most of the transfer switch would go in there, but you would have to go and pick up from other areas also.
Yeah, that's what I expected. You know, most of it's going to be right next to the panel, because that's where they bring it all anyways.
Most of it, but not all of it, right.
And couldn't you have two panels?
I don't know how many panels you would need. Maybe it'd just be one.
I don't, again, it just seems very, very high.
I can get a scope for both ways before bidding.
Why don't we, does the board feel okay with that?
I can spec it out, scope it out, and get a cost estimate, a real estimate for both. I can do that quickly.
Okay.
So what, you want to approve this so he can move forward, and then we'll come back with both scopes for us to approve the final which direction to go, right?
Correct.
Is that what we're saying?
That's good.
And if you can get the state numbers for us too, so we can compare?
Sure.
That'd be great.
I think I can do that.
Good. And I'm sure Sean will have a little bit of a better knowledge of this probably than me anyways.
So in that case, we take a motion?
Move to release to the Public Building Commission in amount not to exceed-
Whoa, 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 do we have to release it? This is approving it.
It's, they still have to come back for the final which one. All right, so what do you want to say, move to?
Well, Jim, help me out here. If we, if we say yes to this, then it's spent and gone, right?
No, he's still coming back.
The contract's not signed, but I think to Tony's point, the money is released from-
That just tells, he can spend up to that amount of money, but he's said he's going to come back to the board for what they want to do.
All right, so we don't need to do this?
But we shouldn't release it to the Public Building Commission then? Right?
Well, if you want, I mean, probably the easiest thing to do is just let him come back in two weeks and tell you, and then release that amount of money.
I might need three, with the holidays.
The board wants options and just hold off, it's not, it'll be on tonight.
If, if we release the funds, then PBC also will have to approve the contract.
PBC's going to have to-
Well, actually, will we approve the contract?
PBC will have to approve it anyways, it's going to go through them and come back up to you.
If they approve it, do we still have to approve it? Because it's-
It's a contract, you approve the contract.
Yeah, it would come before you because it's not going to be a change order to the general contract if he's done.
It's a new contract.
Right.
Well, I'm inclined to move it, only because of, if we moved it, is the intention to get the generator this winter, or is it to get it in the spring? Like, what is your estimation on delivery?
If we approve to do this, I think we should do it as soon as a generator's available, and there's a long lead item right now on generators.
How long?
Two months to three.
So it's not going to help us out anyway? Okay.
And the timing right now is probably the highest.
Right.
I mean, it's coming into winter, people worried about storms.
Yeah, it's probably a little more, sure, but the last few times I've talked to generator people, they're, they've been busy around the clock.
Yeah.
Each month.
Why don't we do this? Come back and, come back, I say our next meeting, you said you need three weeks. It'll be on the first, top of the list to go through. Give us the two scopes, what it is, and then we'll vote it at that point. And I always say that because it's not going to make a difference if it's going to take two or three months, we're in March at that point, waiting three weeks, max, it's not going to make a difference in my mind. So if that works, and that way we'll have it. Sean may be here, but at least we'll have, you know, what you need to be able to move this forward.
Sure.
All right? Thank you on that front.
On the same token, I'll have, if you want, I'll have the police chief and the deputy committee talk about the security. We won't talk about that in open session, but we, I did have a conference on security, public buildings and security. And I came back and I spoke to the deputy and the chief and said, we need to do a security review of all our buildings, including the schools and all our public buildings. They did that. This is what needs to go into the library, just on a basic level, it's cameras and some other things. But if you want to get into the nitty-gritty details, we would do that in executive session because we don't talk about security measures in open session.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, definitely executive session.
The total amount came up to better than $600,000. We've put-
Townwide?
Townwide, yeah. We put a lot of that into the capital budget. The capital budget recommendation is all the schools would get done. The middle school would get done through the middle school project, the rest of them would get done through the capital. The buildings that we have that have their own financing, for lack of a better term, the haba massa, those type of buildings, would all get done, and then the town buildings would be done in the second phase.
Does that include the fact that we just did the high school two years ago?
The high school, yeah, so it's not as much for the high school. I mean, the library's brand-new, and there's, there's $19,000 for the, for the library. I think the middle school is about nine, yeah, about eight or nine, so. Security's changing quite a bit, and you hate to say it this way, every time one of these events happens, then they, they, we learn a lesson, we learn a lesson. So it's pretty comprehensive, but I would need them to come in and really talk to you about what we're going to do.
The one I want to talk about is, is town hall, security here. That's the one that, you know, nothing against the schools, I know the high school, we've done it, the middle school, and obviously the elementary schools are important. Got to think about this one, I, I really worry about town hall.
Again, it's, we have it for every building.
Good.
So there was no security put into the new, brand-new middle school we just built?
Oh, no, there is. He's saying it's just constantly needing to update.
Middle school's actually pretty good. They need some additional stuff. Again, I don't want to talk about it, but some connectivity stuff, ways for them to look at it, things like that. So that only needs about $8,000. But the older the school, the more it needs.
Right.
So we'll schedule them for the next meeting for executive session to go into discussion.
Okay. John, can I ask Kevin an unrelated question about the library?
If you're nice to him, yes.
I'm always nice to him.
Yes.
Kevin, the lights on the exit out, I've gotten a lot of calls that when folks are leaving meetings at 9:00 PM, that it's dark, walking out, and then up the stairs.
We found the problem yesterday.
Oh, good.
It was a computer glitch.
Okay, so-
It's all controlled by computer.
And what time will they go out?
They're on until 9:30.
9:30 now? Okay.
If we need to be later than that, I can change it. We figured out how to do it yesterday.
Okay. Well, do we have an agreement with the residents that it's 9:30 or something?
Well, I think it's important, I don't know if we do, but I think it's important, the library closes at 9:00, so make sure that people are able to get out, the employees, by 9:30. at nine, so make sure that people are able to get out, the employees, by nine-thirty. And if there's a meeting later, then we'll have to figure that out, if there's a?
Yeah. What happens if advisory goes till ten?
We can change the vestibule lights. Any, anybody that's in the building, those lights would stay on because of occupancy sensors.
Yep.
And then, the only thing we would probably change would be the vestibule lights. We could put them on later. Could easily put them on till eleven o'clock. And the, in the parking lot, the center islands stay on all night long.
Okay.
And the perimeter lights.
Yeah, it's really kind of walking up those stairs. Can the stairs be lit later?
The ballads go off it. The ballads go off when the other exterior poles go off.
That's a problem.
But the wall packs on the building out, in the outside of the doors, the, the exterior lights, those are on photocells. So, those are on, from, um?
Overnight.
It's all done.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. All right. It's a good point with advisory meetings and those things. I can change the vestibule light until later.
That'd be great.
But they weren't, they weren't working last Sunday. Though, when people, when they left at five-thirty, there was a problem. And then there was a couple of problems last week. So, we, we tried to fix it last week, and then we called one-eight-hundred help. And that was a lot of fun. And we figured it out yesterday.
Good.
We'd have to install lights. I think she's talking right on the street.
That's a street light. That's a Kevin, the other Kevin issue.
Yeah.
The other Kevin.
All right. So, with respect to the second issue, are we going to put that in then with the discussion in executive session, Jim? Is that what you're looking for?
Yep.
Okay. Before you go, I don't know if I've said this, Kevin, but the Veterans Memorial Gymnasium sign looks great.
Yeah, it looks good.
Really, well done. It's exactly what I had hoped. I don't know about the other board members, but that's exactly what I thought.
I did notice it.
It really, it looks really nice.
It was interesting how long it took us to, to place it in the right place. Because when you, at one point, you can't see it because of the trees, our cugwort, the stuff. But it, it, it's a couple of blind spots, but it does look good. Thank you.
It looks great. It really does.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, so I actually had spoken with the commander of the legion, and he said it looked great. And he was very honored. So, I was glad to see that. So?
Great. And we're starting to install other signage around town for identifying buildings.
The Board of Health was one, which is a nice wayward sign.
That looks great with all the new sign requirements. So, public safety's next, and then recreation.
Great.
So, look good. And it'll all be consistent, which is great.
Any other questions from?
No.
No.
All right, great. Kevin, thank you. Nancy, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving. All right. Now, moving on to?
Mr. Chair, one other comment on signs. I'm sure you all noticed this. The Susan Fippen House sign on the corner of Main Lot and Three A. It looks great. You know, and they moved it. It was up in front. I think they moved it back onto the, onto the house, or right next to the house. But very well-named and very well, it looks great. It's a wooden sign. It's, it's very appropriate. So, kudos to whoever put that and pulled that all together.
Does look good. All right. Other business? Any liaison reports?
Step one. Last, I think it was last meeting, the library came in with a strategic plan.
Yes.
And the first goal was that, and this was, you know, to remind everyone that they went out and did a bunch of community outreach programs, said, "What do people want out of the library?" And the number-one goal out of that was, people wanted to be more informed citizens in the community. So, since that time, they've brainstormed on it. And they had a, actually, a teen group come up with the idea of doing sort of roundtable discussions on single, important topics to be determined. And to facilitate that, the library's going to be applying for a grant through the Mass Library Associations, which encourages citizen engagements. It's a great dovetail. And should they get that, Jesse, Director Finney will have a list of topics that will roll out. And her goal is to try to, whatever the topic is, to have the appropriate board or committee or department participate in that forum, so they can hear directly what people come up with and what their ideas are. But, so that's going forward. And she'll be applying for the grant. It wouldn't be awarded until, I think, April, she said, if they get it.
That's right.
Yeah, it's pretty neat.
Anybody else?
Liaisons? No, not in this short week. You going to talk about last night?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, you?
No, the board had its retreat. We ended up, we do this annually. We have a retreat where the board gets together. It's an open meeting to the public. And what we generally do is we have goals and ideas. And we, we basically talked about, well, first, we went over what we had talked about a year ago, to kind of get a sense of where our goals and where we were and where we are now. And then reprioritize again this year, whether we're actually working within those goals, or whether there are other priorities that kind of begin to leapfrog and move ahead. This was Jim's first retreat that we've had. This is the ninth, I think, retreat we've done. And this was Karen's first retreat. And so, it's very productive. And we begin to prioritize again this coming year, like, the issues, like water for the town and, and other issues that we're dealing with sewage, and also with senior center and gates and schools. And we just kind of get an idea of, like, where we're at and where we need to go. And we talk about the feasibility of these things and what the ramifications are of, of, of these projects and what's going on. So, I found it to be very productive for the board. It was long, about two and a half hours, but shorter than some of the ones we've had in the past. And what I asked my, each of my board members was to create a priority list. And, you know, it's very helpful because some came in with four, some came with five, some came with a much more exhaustive. But I think it's, it's very helpful for all of us to kind of take a look at things and decide, "Okay, this is where we're at and where we need to go, and how do we get there?" So, I didn't know if anybody else on the board had anything they wanted to add to it. But, you know, that's the extent of it. And there was somebody from the public there through all of it. And that was great. So, we're happy about that. Ruth, we missed you.
I'll have it go for me immediately.
Well, that's a very important one, no doubt. Other than that, I did want to point out, I guess we have correspondence. And then we can get to, you know, basically, other business that people want to say. But I think there are a few things.
Yep. Are we done with liaison then? Okay. Correspondence, just a couple of things. Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, as you know, last time we met, Jamie's Pub had been on their credit delinquency, and they had their hearing. And it was obviously related to them being closed because of the fire. And they were granted their removal from that, which you expect.
I thought it was kind of strange because they didn't show up. But they must have submitted information.
Yeah. I mean, it was, I think that one was pretty.
Which is good. I'm happy for them. That's not, that's not the point. But I just thought it was ironic.
And Nancy has informed, Nancy Holt has informed us that we have, FEMA has released another sixty-nine thousand dollars in reimbursements for past storm work. That just was received, which brings, including that, in the last three years of disbursements, we're up to seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars of FEMA reimbursements for prior storms. And finally?
And that's from Nemo, from two thousand thirteen.
Yeah. Well, it's from all the, oh, that one? Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for chasing those down. And the last was, the, the board received a letter, well, actually, I should say, the Water Commissioners received a letter from the Water Resources Committee that attached to other letters, one from the, a director of the planning board, and one from a prior Water Resources member, committee member, concerned about the implementation and understanding of the brown water problems. So, you should all have a copy of that by now. That's all the correspondence. And then, yeah, and then, as Jim already mentioned, the, the Police Department and the Board of Selectmen have been getting a number of calls about the spoofing. And to remind people that if you do receive a call and you want, you should report it to the FCC. And those links are on the town and the police Facebook pages. And just don't, as Jim said, please don't give any personal data to anybody that claims they're from the town, because we won't call you for that. That's it.
Thank you, Karen. That really bothers me. I, I'm concerned about these, these calls that are coming. Because I somehow, somewhere tripped my telephone number, and I'm getting the calls for different things. And I just immediately hear and I delete it. But the reason why I'm concerned is there are some people, maybe of a certain age or tender mind, that they'll listen to it, and they'll think, "Jeez, I got to call them back." And then all of a sudden, start paying money.
It's a terrible thing.
It's a horrible thing. And I just, just hope that people take, be wise of it and see if we can get that information out and spread it. That's all. But, on to other things. Any other business that people want to talk about?
Just a quick?
The sports report.
Well, first, I want to ask on the, these contracts, the boat that we got from the Federal Law Enforcement Trust Fund?
Yep.
What is that?
It's a surplus boat that the Police Department was able to get. It's similar to the one that Marshfield has. It's about a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar boat. They were able to get it for forty out of their drunk forfeiture fund.
And it's?
Is it new?
Not new, but it's in very good shape. They actually got a chance to look at it before they bought it. So, it's in very good shape. So, they will be retiring a boat.
What? Oh, they'll be retiring a boat?
That's what I said. If you're getting a new boat, you're going to have to be getting rid of a boat, not just that.
Do you know how big it is?
I thought my head. No, Tony. If you remember the one that was parked on at Rock Marine, the red one, Swampscott boat, it had an orange, kind of similar to that.
Okay. Good. Well, I know we were all at the football game, so I don't, John, I think you, I think it'd be most appropriate for, actually, I will say this. Situate High School won their football game, destroyed Swampscott. Sorry, Governor Baker. But it was just a mess. Our team went out. We were winning forty-two to nothing at half. Swampscott didn't even have a first down. It was, it was a wonderful game, if you're from Situate. But the, the crowd got a little rowdy. And there was a little bit, security had to come over, and they had to, I don't think they arrested the person, but they made sure that he put his cowbell down and stopped ringing the cowbell, because apparently it breaks MIA violations. And Mr. Danny, I, I hope that you weren't too embarrassed when they came over and handcuffed you.
I had no idea. You can't bring a cowbell to an event. It's at the semifinals of football. And I will say, the athletic director.
We told the police that he was from Vermont, and that kind of explained a lot of it.
And, you know, I, I said to him, "I didn't realize that. I would not have brought the cowbell." I mean, I said, "Some people are yelling, 'More cowbell.'" And I'm like, "Yes, absolutely." And so, I apologize for breaking the crowd rules of no cowbell. And?
Anyone's looking for?
But it was successful. The more it rang, the more they scored. So, I'm like, and this is actually a Vermont cowbell, like, you know, from nineteen, eighteen hundred. So, it worked. But?
It definitely worked. Bring it to Gillette.
Is it going to Gillette?
I was trying to figure out how to get it into Gillette. But, but I, with the metal detectors, I think they're going to probably take it away. But, yeah, the, the football team, the boys' voice of varsity, their, their season has been magical. They're, they're in the big game, the state championship, what they call the Super Bowl. They do have a game on Thursday. It's at Hingham for Thanksgiving Day. And it's going to be bitterly cold. So, if you are planning on going, dress warm. But I have to tell you, they are, right now, ten and one. It's the farthest a team has gone, I guess, in the modern day. And I just have to say, for the coaches, the parents, the cheerleaders, the players, it's been well-done on, on both sides of the ball. And they're a good team. So, if you have a chance to go, it's December first on Saturday, not this Saturday, but a week from Saturday, one-thirty, Foxborough. And I suppose there'll probably be some more information about maybe caravanning or people who are going. The last time I'd been to a championship was two years ago for the hockey at the Garden. And it seemed like there were eighteen thousand people there, which was basically half the town. Unfortunately, even if we had, you know, eight thousand or ten thousand people, it's going to look like just five people at Foxborough Stadium.
Well, we'll, I'll sit together.
It, it'll be a fun time if people are interested. And kudos to the boys and the, the girls for, for doing what they've done. A great season, and the parents. So, yes.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Go. It's a great time. You'll know a hundred people there. The kids are playing great. The, you know, it's just a great town event. And even just going to the Hanover game, it was, you know, there were like ten people from Swampscott there and two thousand people from Situate. It was, it was, it was awesome. So, go next Saturday and root on the team to a championship.
Week from Saturday, right?
Week from Saturday.
Week from Saturday.
December first. Yep. Anything? I just wanted to say that I was very, I know that Tony and Sean had done some observance for Veterans Day. I happened to go with the Situate Country Club. Jim Boudreau came, which was nice. Karen Canfield came. My vice chairman, Maura Curran, came. And we were there. And Ruth was there. And it was a well-done commemoration of the, of the veterans. And what I found fascinating was, there were three, three, three World War II veterans.
Four.
Oh, four, then. Oh, there was another, on the other side. I apologize. There were two on my side. And four veterans from the Second World War. And I just thought to myself, there are ninety?
One was a hundred.
One or older. I think ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five. One was one hundred and two.
Well, the woman was one hundred and two.
The woman was one hundred and two. And I just thought to myself, it was nice to see them. But it's also sad to see so, so, I guess, what's the word I want? Not as many as there were ten years ago. But, so it was nice that you all made it and you did it. That was a nice thing to see on a Sunday. Other than that, the only other thing I was going to say is, I know Sean wasn't here. We celebrated his birthday. He was fifty-three, no, fifty-four, no, fifty-five. And I know Sean is the second youngest, no, I think he's the second, because the third youngest is celebrating his birthday on Sunday. He's turning fifty-five. Well, I'll let him talk. Tony Vignani on Sunday.
Is it Sunday?
Is it Sunday?
I don't know.
Ah, you're forgetting, uh?
He never invites us.
Just wanted to wish Tony Vignani a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And many more. And we, we will remember and we won't forget, you know?
Thank you very much.
Aside from that, I think we need to approve the minutes, if we have them here.
Move to accept the minute, meeting minutes from the Board of Selectmen, meeting held on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, and November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.